East Greenbush Central School District Board being to order. Board members present Cheryl, John, Mark, myself, Jennifer, Brian. We do anticipate Emily will be here as well. So with that, could you please join me in the place of allegiance?
My allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. Consider the public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Draft minutes. Let's see, I don't think we have a forum for that because of absences. Let's see here, one, two, three, four, five. Jesse's not here. Jen's here. Cheryl is not here. So we don't have to move that to the next meeting. All right, next I have board forum. Cheryl, anything? Good, John?
Good.
Mark?
Thank you.
Jennifer? Nothing from me. Public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to system concerns in public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons who should address the board would recognize the chair of the meeting and should state for the record the name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that visitors' forum is not deemed to be open for. The board president will conduct the forum for an efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited would declare out of all comments. She will limit it to five minutes. Anyone want to address the board? One, yes. For Dr. McQueen. I'm sorry. And Mr. Holmzing, good seeing you. How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Good evening. So Mark and I wanted to stop by and take an opportunity to acknowledge Sean Masters retiring at the end of this week. Sean is one of eighty-eight of the licensed professionals serving the district as a school bus driver. Sean joined the district in nineteen ninety-five, and he's been a dedicated and loyal employee. He's also been a strong advocate for both the transportation department and his colleagues. Sean has a flawless driving record, which is no small feat, given that over the past twenty-eight years, he has safely transported our students over eleven thousand times. We wish him a long and happy retirement, and he's going to be missed greatly. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So Dan Allison's is pretty disruptive. What's going on? So we're in the public forum. Anybody else want to address the board?
Good evening. Allison Hosea, President of the East Greenbush Teachers Association. I just wanted to make some remarks quickly about the current state of teaching. According to a Gallup poll, in two thousand and twenty-two, K-12 teachers report the highest burnout rate of all U.S. professions. Nonprofit group Not Waiting for Superman has surveyed over twelve thousand teachers, and eighty-five percent report that their jobs are unsustainable. The National Education Association reports that eighty percent of educators say they are taking on more work due to unfilled job openings. Ninety-four percent of educators want more student mental health and behavioral support. Fifty-five percent of educators now indicate that they are ready to leave teaching earlier than planned. According to an MDR research study, only ten percent of teachers would recommend teaching as a profession. We see how this is affecting us in the capital region with the announcement that the College of Saint Rose is closing after being in operation for one hundred years due to low enrollment. Many of our teachers, including myself, either got their bachelor's or master's in education at Saint Rose. Why is this happening? Teachers do not feel supported. The past three years of teaching have been the hardest we have ever faced. We have a profession that many are allowed to comment on, a profession where politicians dictate how we are to do our jobs. And blame is easily thrown at our feet for society's ills. We have new initiatives, new curriculum, new problems, new everything thrown on our plate each and every year. We have lockdowns, lockouts, social emotional learning, state tests, and the list goes on and on. Yet we put on a brave face each and every day. We come in, and we give our students our all. This district has some of the finest educators I have ever seen, helping us to be rated number one by the Times Union, and recently Goff was voted number one by the U.S. News and World Report. Change must begin with us. We are the answer. It's getting harder and harder every day to continue to push through everything that's thrown our way while not feeling valued. I ask our leadership in this board to truly show that you value the amazing people that make up the EGTA, and I sincerely wish each and every one of you a happy holidays. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Moving on from the public forum. Reports and presentations superintendent?
I have no reports or presentations.
Next item is a discussion item about the establishment of a girls' flag football team at Columbia High School. Anybody want to come listen background on that?
Yes, Ryan Jones, our athletic director is here. He has been working with. Where is Ryan? It's in the back. Ryan has been working with the other athletic directors in the suburban council league to organize and support a girls' flag football team program we offered at the varsity level this spring in accordance with some specifications that he's going to explain this evening and costs associated with it. At a previous meeting when he presented his athletic program review, he did mention this program was under development. We would like our students to be able to participate in the program, and I'm going to ask Ryan to kind of explain and kind of outline some of the some of the details in terms of the program design, the coaches that we need to hire should we go forward with the program and the budget and some of the grants that are available to help support the program.
Yep, absolutely. So thank you. Yeah, so with the suburban council athletic directors, there's about twelve schools right now from our fifteen school league that are committed to play girls' flag football this spring. Great opportunity for female student athletes, something that's going on across the state that Section Two is kind of, you know, behind getting involved with. So what we're asking to do, along with the partnership with the New York Giants, is we're looking to bring girls' flag football to Section Two. With that, we're going to have, you know, a twelve-team league. There is one school outside of the suburban council interested in participating. We would have them as part of our league. We would play, you know, kind of a round robin. And then the champion from Section Two would compete in the first-ever state championship tournament that NISVA is sponsoring this year. So what we're looking and asking for, along with the partnership that the New York Giants have, they're offering a grant to of thirty thousand dollars to Section Two for any teams that get on board to participate this year. We also have some other things that we're working on with USA Football, along with equipment, flag belts, the footballs, the other things that we need to go along with that. And then as a league, we would like to work together to come up with uniforms that would be uniform across the league to provide opportunities for these student athletes and just make sure we're all on the same page. We are looking to bring on two coaches. It is football, even though it's flag football. There's a lot that goes into it. There is still minimal contact. So we think it's important that we have two coaches just from a safety standpoint, a head coach and an assistant coach. You know, it's still offense, defense, special teams, things like that. So we think it's important to have two coaches as part of the part of the management. There are also some additional funds that are being worked on with local organizations looking to help get the startup. Someone mentioned Broadview and things like that to help get the startup going in Section Two, to help offset costs, help, you know, get this going so that we can be a part of what else, what everything else is going on across the state. There is a proposal on here of two similar sport seasons. It's, we went off of the model of our head lacrosse coach and assistant lacrosse coach. They're both spring sports. We went, we're going with a sixteen sport model or sixteen-game model, which is the same as lacrosse. So that's kind of what we're basing that number off of. But we're hopeful with the funding that's coming from the other organization in the state that it would help offset what we need to get this going. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? This is a discussion item. We're asking the board to approve it this evening. We can approve it at a future meeting unless the board is comfortable this evening. I mean, Ryan, the go ahead, but they're really doing a great job of organizing it. You didn't mention the survey that we did of the.
Yep, so we did put out a survey. It was through Google Forms. I'm not sure all of our students checked their emails for this. But we did have, you know, at least thirty-three students come back with interest in participating. You know, some of this did go out to our middle school students. So it is a varsity sport. They would have to go through the APP process. So it wouldn't necessarily just be open to all of our middle school students right off the bat. But it does show that, you know, there is the interest within our district. Rosters would be about, you know, you need about fifteen to twenty to get things going. You know, recently they said, you know, they can go up to twenty-five, things like that. But then, you know, dealing with numbers, games like that. But I think the interest is there, and I think, you know, even though, you know, it was some of our middle school students responding, that there will be the high school interest as well.
And the spring, anticipated spring, is all of the other districts committed already?
Yep, yep. The districts are committed. They're getting the ball rolling. Everyone's, you know, starting the process of hiring coaches. We're also talking about setting up, you know, coaching clinics and things like that prior to the season, just to, you know, get all the coaches on the same page, making sure they have the opportunity for the professional development and stuff like that so that, you know, we're not just going to this blind. When we show up day one, we're ready to go get things rolling. I know Troy High School had a team last year. They were the only team in Section Two. They're looking to get, you know, like a little scrimmage-type thing going on at the beginning of the season, like a little jamboree, get everyone together, get teams working together before we kind of go off and start competing.
Officiating too?
Officiating, yeah. We were told, you know, the same organization that handles the officiating for fall, fall football. They're prepared and ready to go with this, and I think it's three officials per game will be there, and they're ready to go.
Does anybody have any objections to approving that this evening?
I just have a question regarding that coach stipend. Is that driven by this organization, or is that something that we thought is?
So as a league athletic directors, we spoke about what we thought would be comparable. We talked about the length of season, the number of competitions, and we kind of agreed as athletic directors that this would be similar to what we're asking the lacrosse coach to do. So that was kind of the consensus across the board in our league that that's what we kind of base this off of because it's a brand-new sport.
So the stipend is, you would say, on par with other like sports?
Yeah.
And do you, are these, are the coaches for this going to be specialized in, in football? Or is it flag football, or is it?
It's flag football. They'd have to have their New York State coaching certification, which they would still go through the same process that we go with any other coach, First Aid CPR. They'd have to have the coaching, you know, course certification. You know, flag football is kind of new, so, you know, maybe it's someone that has football knowledge or other sport knowledge that that's where we're really pushing to have that professional development ahead of time where, you know, they can go into it, not just, you know, reading through a pamphlet or something like that, that they've been on the field already, working with, you know, other coaches that are, you know, well-versed in the sport to get them going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So any objection to moving something forward now so they can get started? And then Ryan can move on the process. No? Any questions? Not in all, taking a motion or resolution to set the proposal and. Mark, your second, anyone? John, all those in favor? All right, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Let's get some interest, and I hope the the team can move forward with competitive season.
Right, thank you very much.
Next item is the EV bus grant application. I assume, Jennifer?
We're all going to kind of partner on this. So there have been a lot of discussions within school districts and across our state regarding the state mandate to transition our bus fleet by two thousand and thirty-five to zero emission buses. Initially, when this requirement first came out, everyone was concerned about the timeline, and we're still concerned about the timeline. We have a fleet of about a hundred and three buses right now, and how do we meet the expectation that all of our fleet is zero emission by two thousand and thirty-five? It's a very challenging timeline that could possibly change. And there's been some state advocacy to see what could be done to change that expectation. By two thousand and twenty-seven, under the current law, we can no longer purchase diesel or gas fuel buses. So somewhat encouraging that the state has come out with some grants, monies that are available for helping districts pay the difference between the EV buses and the diesel and gas buses, as well as the EPA has federal funding available to do this. So these funding streams are now available to school districts who work with various vendors who are approved, such as Leonard Bus Company, which is our primary vendor that we've utilized to apply for the funds. By applying for the funds, we have not yet made the decision of how many buses we would buy, whether we would buy any buses at all. We have to look at our bus replacement schedule in the spring. However, it made sense to us to recommend to the board to at least understand what the funding streams are and how the grant application process works. And Dr. McQueen, who's here, and Jennifer Mulligan have worked on this and will explain how the grant works.
Yes, so basically, there are two stackable funding opportunities. First is the EPA rebate program. East Greenbush is not considered a prioritized district, but we are eligible for the rebate program. For the EPA grant, it is a lottery. So basically, you know, there's not certainty as to whether or not we'd be granted this component. But if we are, it does provide up to two hundred thousand dollars to assist with the purchase of the bus, along with charging infrastructure. And when they talk about charging infrastructure, they're talking about from the district meter to the charging station, so not the electrical service to the meter. In addition to that, there's also funding through the NISBIP, which is the New York State Bus Incentive Program. And these are stackable, and this is funding that's available to the dealers of. So like Leonard Bus would be making that application and applying on behalf of us, and they would receive the funds to offset the cost of the bus. That also is available to help offset some of the charging infrastructure. Based on the actual cost of the bus, we're talking about sixty-six passenger buses with three-string batteries, which are the highest-capacity batteries to give us a range of about two hundred miles. The price of those buses are about a half a million dollars. So when you look at the incentives and the stackable grants, you know, it could drive the cost down to approximately a hundred thousand dollars per bus.
Budget aid or bus aid?
And then there could be bus aid for the actual net cost, the actual end cost for us. So so basically, we're looking for support to at least go in and have these stackable funding opportunities applied for as part of the EPA rebate application. There is a school board awareness certification that needs to be done. The application would go in as six buses. And why is it six buses? It's because the New York State Bus Incentive Program limits us to six buses. So I know where you still need to, you know, the board still needs to consider the number of buses, as Mr. Simons indicated, the infrastructure needs. So there's still a lot of planning that needs to go in place. But the grant application is due at the end of January, and Leonard Bus is helping and assisting with that application. Is there any questions on that?
So if the district were to put something on its purchase schedule for some of these buses in the May budget proposal, is it funded after the fact? Like, how would that work if we get the money?
So the EPA award, those announcements would come out around March and April of this year. We already spoke with legal counsel Jeff Lewis at Ferrara about how the bus proposition would need to be drafted. We're still working through that process with them, but there'd be flexibility in that proposition to allow us to still evaluate whether or not we are purchasing our traditional buses or the number that are going to be EV or the, and what the funding. There could be some criteria of the not to exceed amount or, you know, built into that proposition. So we're looking at making sure we have flexibility because the infrastructure component is the big, you know, unknown.
Does Leonard say how with the delivery time is for some of the ordering buses?
So from order date, it's about eleven-month build time, you know, for some.
Especially the demand, probably.
Right, right. And the EPA program requires a completion of project by April of two thousand and twenty-six. So they're looking that the orders need to be in place in this fall, October two thousand and twenty-four. For the program to be complete, they mean infrastructure in place. There will be extensions, thirty, sixty, ninety-day extensions, and possibly rolling extensions if there's delays in bus build or something with the utility service that needs to be arranged.
But I think it's, my opinion is, I think it's appropriate to move forward. A lot of direction of having to deal with this transition. I think it'd also be a good way for us to get some electric buses to see how they work in our routes and how things can go and move forward that way, at least to see what we're anticipating and the kind of challenges we may face with EV buses and.
Right, and then, and just an evaluation if, for some reason, we aren't the lucky draw in the lottery on the EPA side of things, then there'll need to be an evaluation. If the NISBIP is available to us, you know, at what point do we move forward based on our overall net cost?
I know there's differences of opinions about the whole mandate, but I think at some point, we need to move forward, at least quotes piloting this kind of thing. And if there's monies available, I think we should take advantage of it, at least offset those pretty high costs of those buses.
I'd like to take this opportunity to offer my opinion.
Sure.
I understand the need for planning.
Yep.
And can appreciate it, and this is not directed at anybody. But I am one hundred percent vehemently opposed to the state education and the direction they're going in. We're talking about infrastructure for electric buses at a half a million dollars apiece when our, when our buildings and our infrastructure within our buildings in our district and the national teaching crisis that we face. And the state has decided through the federal government to prioritize an unnecessary funding project when we are in a crisis in the state, in the state of education. So my position is more of a point to be made at state ed that they continue to disappoint the local districts, and they continue to not support districts in the needs that they have. And they're pushing it to the taxpayers. We have districts throughout this state, their buildings are falling down, the children are not being educated properly because of facilities, and we're worried about infrastructure in a bus garage and telling us we have to pay half a million dollars for a bus that they're not going to guarantee us reimbursement on. So that is my official position. It's not reflected to anybody in this room, but I am terribly disappointed in state education. And I have written the governor, I have written the Assembly McDonald, and I will make it known to NISVA as well, because this is just not right. Thank you.
I don't disagree with your position.
No, I know that, I just need.
I think that, yes, I think the resources should be placed in a more appropriate student and staff-based process. The other part of that is our reality is that this is, this train is going down the tracks, so to speak. And I think we at least take the opportunity to look at the process, what they're making available to us to, to start this, and then at least move forward this kind of testing of what these buses could do on our roads and on our district and what we would face in the event that the train keeps rolling.
Oh, I got it, but I'm willing to die on that hill.
Understood. Anybody else have any questions?
I wanted to ask Dr. McQueen if she had anything to add, because she's been working directly with Jennifer and Leonard Bus on this too.
No, I think, I think Jen really summed it up in her memo. I think she really covered all the highlights. I think the important thing is we do have a full eighteen months after we are awarded the grant to actually purchase the buses, and that also could be extended. So it's not just a matter of six buses maybe for next year. If we decide as a district to move forward with six buses to purchase all of them, but we will also be able to move that into maybe the next school year and possibly into the next one if there's an extension. So again, I like that we have a lot of latitude with what we decide to do with the school buses if we receive both awards. And I think that's the important thing. We still, we're not really, we're not going to be held down to having to get six EV buses for next year.
We're really just asking for support to file the grant application. The decisions regarding what we buy and how many we buy will come as part of our normal budget.
Other, other concerns.
And certainly having those monies available is important to the decision.
Understood, okay. And is that a resolution to move forward the application later on agenda?
There is not a resolution on there. We just wanted you to know about it because that form that you have to sign, Mike, that says.
I saw the form, so.
We made aware of it.
Okay, that's it. So I'm not signing any commitments here.
No.
All right, thank you very much. Regular business, approval of programs for residents, children, or disabilities? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Jennifer, second, John, all those in favor? Approved. Next, we have the employment agreement for Dr. McQueen. Questions or comments? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Mark, second, Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. And then the capital project proposal, the SECRE resolution. Jeff, can you just comment on that quickly or Jennifer?
Yes, this SECRE resolution is an environmental requirement regarding capital projects for municipalities and school districts. This is the initial approval, which indicates that the district and the board would serve as the lead agency. This kicks off a process where our architectural firm in our district begins to do a full review with our attorneys of the scope of the project, any potential environmental impacts, and then classifies our SECRE process as either a type one or a type two. Most likely, that review will conclude that it's a type one review because of the land work that we're doing as far as athletic fields, site work. So it's, it could have the potential to be a type one, which has the potential to be more environmental impact than simply, you know, work within the buildings. So that process is already started. Lavelle has been working on that with Callie Heinrich, our attorney. But this basically gives us the go-ahead to send notification out to other agencies that our district would serve as the lead agency for SECRE completion.
Correct. The only thing to add is in March, when we proposed the proposition, at that point in time, there'll be additional SECRE information and evaluation in terms of making a declaration as to whether or not there is a negative impact, meaning no impact on, on the environment, and that would be a resolution the board would be looking at to undertake.
You have any questions for that? No, so we just start basically kicking off the process. Very good. Need a motion to approve that? John, need a second? Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. Next, we have committee reports. Marissa?
Thank you, Mr. Pino. With Mr. Mahar's retirement coming up at the end of the school year, we're going to begin recruiting for our principal position.
All right.
And the position will be posted right after the holiday recess. For our instructional vacancies, we have a part-time computer literacy teacher at Goff Middle School. Mr. McHugh conducted building-level interviews last week, and final interviews are taking place on Friday. We have one full-time teaching assistant position at DPS and two part-time teaching assistant positions at Goff. Both of those positions are currently posted with a closing date of December twenty-seventh. And our non-instructional vacancies, we continue to struggle finding qualified automotive mechanics. So we still have a continuous recruitment ad out. We're looking for two auto mechanics. We've reached out to our local colleges to see if they have anyone in the mechanic programs at Hudson Valley, as well as continuously posting on Indeed and also having some outreach to our bus garage. As well as continuously posting on Indeed and also having some outreach to our bus garage. We have two bus aid positions. That application deadline is December twenty sixth. We just finished final interviews for custodial worker at Green Meadow. An offer was made to a candidate and we're looking to get that candidate on our January tenth agenda for approval. We have one vacancy in Mr. Goodwin's office. We have our educational technology specialist. That position. Application deadline closed yesterday and interviews are being conducted later this week. We have one food service helper position at Janay, a monitor position at Belltop, and then there is a typist position at DPS. Mr. LV conducted building level interviews last week and is sending two candidates forward for a final round interview. Anyone have any questions?
Earlier this month, we had our health insurance review committee meeting. The primary item that was reviewed with the committee is an update on our administrative change for the retiree billing. So we were able to report out and share the draft letter that was going out to retirees that. Are billed for health insurance for their spouses and dependents. And that transition to AMSure for that billing is well underway. Retirees paying, billed retirees have received coupons, their updated coupons for this week. And we've gotten some positive feedback from retirees that they're happy that they now have the. Option to pay their bills with an electronic funds transfer. So, so that is going well and that was. The nature of our health insurance committee meeting.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you. So on December sixth, we had our committee for curriculum study meeting. Agenda was fairly brief. We received updates on our AIS, our and mathematics program review. And then for our social studies program review, Ms. Macaloney. As for, we needed to endorse our district-wide goals for that program review and they were endorsed. Something I did want to mention, Mr. D. Denial brought up when he was giving an overview of mathematics, something that wasn't necessarily related to the math. Program, program review, but. You know, this is a heavy year for program reviews and there's some overlap in terms of staff members that. May want to participate with the math program review as well as the AIS program review. So we, you know, had just a brief discussion. Talking about looking at that calendar and maybe, you know, would have to make, you know, a group or two, maybe go off cycle, but to. You know, level those out a little bit so we don't have a year that's so heavy. So everyone who wants to participate in the program review will be able to. And not have to be shared among some different reviews. So that's something that we're going to be taking a look at in the spring. And then I just gave a, a quick update with our new Board of Education strategic vision and goals to the committee. And again, just talked about how, you know, the work that we're doing within that committee and all of our different departments really need to make sure that we're supporting. Our district goals and we'll talk about that, you know, throughout the year as well. And then just give a brief update regarding professional development. We will be participating in the Questar Professional Development Day on March fifteenth. As well as some, some additional PD that will be geared just towards our district. And then Ms. Mahar just gave a brief update on some of the work that she's doing with embedded professional development, pushing into. Some of our three through five classes this coming month to start doing some work regarding computer-based testing and, and some of the other. ELA initiatives that we have.
Any comments or feedback on the board goals or the document?
When you, Roy, when you talked about the vision and goals, was there more of a discussion or was it just here are the goals and?
So it was a little bit brief because I did get approval from Mr. Simons. This was before the board officially approved them. So they were, you know, I think we felt very confident that they would be approved, but that committee doesn't meet again until after. I think it's January, maybe it's seventeenth. So there's going to be a gap there. So I, I did just want to have a brief discussion of what, you know, what they are. And, you know, let, let that group know that, you know, as the year progresses. You know, from, from my point of view, we're talking a little bit more and making sure that what we're doing. In terms of summer curriculum writing and the different things that come out of that committee are really strongly aligned to our goals. But we didn't get into specifics.
What else?
So we had our second attendance policy committee meeting of the school year on December thirteenth. The committee is made up of instructional staff, social workers, principals, non-instructional staff that. Engaged with the students and the parents. We talked about how things were going at the high school and the middle school and at the elementary school level. Overall, we are seeing some improvements in attendance and tardiness. However. We remain concerned about consistency among some students and chronic absenteeism. The chronic absenteeism standard is students that miss ten percent or more of the instructional days that are available. So we try to track that by quarter. But on a daily basis, staff at the high school and the middle school and the elementary school are really focused on the kids that are missing more days. Regardless of the reasons, because it doesn't matter whether it's an excused absence or unexcused absence. If they're not in school, they're not learning. And there's a definite correlation, particularly as we look at middle school course failures. We talked about this. Which have improved overall between attendance and course passing rates. The focus at the high school is on helping the transition of freshmen. Both academically and understanding that there's a big expectation jump from eighth grade to ninth grade. Ms. Farnin, the assistant principal, reported that. There are. Working with certain students in a peer tutoring program. To provide students with an opportunity not only to be tutored, but to understand the expectations regarding attendance. There are sanctions in place for kids who. Are not attending or consistently are tardy, such as loss of parking privileges and traditional consequences. But at the same time, our social workers and our staff is engaged in working with families to try to address the barriers to good attendance. One of the things that has been talked about over the last few years and by administrators, counselors, social workers and teachers. Is that the process that historically has been used to assist school districts with kids who have very poor attendance. Through the probation department is not working very well at all, to the point where schools have. Tried to access those services through the PINS process and really state law has made that process ineffective. The. The referrals that go through the PINS process typically result in some level of review. But the. The teeth of the family court, so to speak, is no longer there as part of the state law. So. We have been talking about this among the superintendents and trying to bring this forward as an advocacy issue because persons in need of supervision process. Was designed for kids that are either incorrigible or have poor attendance and. We are able to access some services through that process for the students, but. Typically want to have support for the kids and the families and identify the barriers, but at the same time, there has to be some consequence for not coming to school. And that PINS process doesn't necessarily have the consequence piece anymore. Mr. McHugh stated that about five point six percent of the students are chronically absent at the middle school. There's a close correlation between those. Situations and student mental health. We have services in place where we refer those kids who need mental health services. There's been. Correlation between kids who failed more than one course and absenteeism ranging between thirty-five and forty-five days already. It's a small number of kids, but it's a lot of days for kids to miss. We're doing home visits. We're trying to address. The issues. We've had success with some. One of the issues that continues to come up when we have our attendance meeting is we have students that are doing well. Academically but miss school for family vacations that are planned during non-vacation times. We have communicated out to our families to try to avoid those kinds of situations. And it's still an impact on our school's identification and our chronic absenteeism rate. Mr. Greg Nan talked a little bit about what was happening at the elementary school level. Communications have been going out to parents. Our social worker, Mr. Gregorio, talked about an intensive aftercare program. For parents that has been meeting with some success, with parents establishing goals for attendance for their children. Outside community activities, ideas were discussed to improve engagement by having some more after-school activities. That might draw kids to such things as Homer Clubs and other activities after school. And there was a discussion about, that I brought forward regarding the board's goals to focus on student transition, students from fifth grade. Transitioning to the middle school and students transitioning from the middle school to the high school. That we really ought to take a look at some of the traditional activities that we do to help transition kids and maybe do a little bit more extensive. During the year to acclimate kids to changes in expectations, changes in culture and changes in relationships that occur as the kids transition through different levels. Of our school system and rather than having it be one or two events, having a different process. And we're going to talk about that. With our administrators, but. The concern is that students who generally have academic challenges and maybe missing school would have more. Difficulty transitioning and what supports can we put in place to bridge the gap so that those kids can do better when they transition from one level to the next? We just started that conversation. We'll have more to come on that, but it was a good meeting. Things are improving overall, but. There are some students who are continually absent. We try to intervene and sometimes we're successful. And sometimes we have to find success.
Questions?
I just wanted to ask about the IAPP, the intensive aftercare parenting. Is that at every elementary school?
I think it is something that is being expanded the other. I think this came at the initiation of the social worker at Janay. And, and it's something that she has been sharing with the committee and sharing with other social workers that she has found to be accepted. Successful. It is a voluntary program that the parents have to talk in. Participate in and consent to participate in. So it's, it's not necessarily something that is mandated. But it's something that she has believed has been successful in a couple of cases.
Can you just talk about the home visits? Like what? Are there certain criteria that makes a home visit an ideal situation? And then do we feel like? We have the supports for that family?
I think sometimes we're successful at identifying what the supports are that the family needs and sometimes we're not. Typically, we do a home visit with either a counselor, a social worker and an administrator. Sometimes it's an SRO. Counselor and an administrator, sometimes it's a teacher, a counselor, administrator. So they generally go in teams for safety considerations. You know, trying to talk with the family about, you know, what the situation is, why children are not coming to school. To be honest, sometimes it's a matter of family mental health issues whereby. Kids are getting themselves up. To try to get to school or when the home visit occurs, particularly in the morning, I think they're pretty consistent about it. At least at the middle school level and high school level, the, the parents are not up yet. And so there's not that support in the morning to get the kids into the routine that they need to be in to go to school and the expectations. So. Sometimes after a home visit, the, the parent says, yeah, I'll get my child to school right away and it, it's a short-term improvement. Then maybe the pattern slipped back, but. You know, sometimes it's a, it's an opportunity to educate and connect the family to some of the resources that our social workers can bring. To the process or our SROs can bring to the process. And they're continuing to do it. And, and, and one of the things we've talked about is. We try to do it in a way that is supportive and non-threatening. And sometimes that is, is challenging to do. There was an old model of a truant officer knocks on the door. There's so many of these situations now in communities and districts that that model really doesn't necessarily have any. Support at the county level or the state level in terms of potential consequences for not coming to school.
Do you, do you know if the district is familiar and with the here's line? It's a new line with the state. So if someone calls, say, a mandated reporter, it's, it's a, it's a way to get support directly to the parents. Here's its heels, help, empower, advocate, reassure, support. And it's a line where folks can hear what a family needs and put them in. Contact with support in, in the county and their area.
I am not personally aware of that. But I will look.
Okay. And if you need the information, I'm happy to send it, but we're seeing a lot of success that way in instances like this. Where it's really support is what the family needs.
Sorry. I just wanted to also include that you, you mentioned the home visits. So there is some, some really good support through. Through state ed on some professional development on how to make sure that home visits are as impactful as they can be and. Less threatening and really making sure that they're a bridge and. You know, really building a partnership, not like you said, knocking on the door saying, you know, come to school, really, you know, working through what are the barriers and, and all that piece. So I'm. You know, it hasn't happened yet, but I am working with getting them in to work with our staff to make sure that when we are doing home visits, they're as impactful as they can be.
That's great. Thank you.
And I think that's important for the community to understand the efforts that are being made to try to connect kids and families. To return to school on a more regular basis, consistent basis for their education.
And I feel like we'll see success if we have the supports and know how, how a family, you know, a wide array of the different needs. That the families have and we can get them those resources and those.
The only other thing I will say, because we have a good audience of teachers here, is I think it's really important that student-teacher relationship we looked at in terms of. School attendance. I think teachers have a powerful impact on kids wanting to be in school and our teachers do. A very good job trying to connect with kids, even those kids that are challenging our teachers. So I would. You know, as much as we talk about social workers and administrators and counselors doing home visits, many teachers do home visits. I think that's important, but I also think it's important that if the child, and I've said this to the committee, has one. Class that they're looking forward to going to every day or one person that they want to connect with, whether that be a teacher or a non-instructional employee. That could be the reason the kid decides to get up in the morning, get themselves dressed to get off to school despite the parent support that they may not have. So. Building those relationships and having kids feel like they are able to connect with teachers and teachers reaching out to those kids. When they're not in class is really very important.
And also if they have something to eat.
Yes, and we do have a lot of. In addition to breakfast and lunch program, we have a lot of people that work together to accommodate those kids that may come in late, who still need to have breakfast. Make those kinds of accommodations in the kids' schedules, almost on a daily basis. We have teachers that give snacks to the kids and do all kinds of things to make sure that they're not hungry during the day.
Just a quick question, leaving. How has that been going with the? Lunch program, free lunch program?
I'll have to give you a report on that. Last I checked into that, the, the progress was slow in terms of the families knowing about. And being, you know, making sure that they were aware of it and that the kids were participating in it. I don't know if you know anything more than that, but. Last we checked in with Colleen Wise, our school lunch manager, it was after the announcement had come out. And there was still some, there was somewhat of a little bit of an increase, but not, not a frail awareness of it.
I spoke with Colleen. She said there's definitely an increase and she's been checking in with each department member as well. Just to get a pulse on how are they doing due to the increase in the demand for the lunches. So. We had a meeting with Jennifer to discuss that. We're going to continue having those meetings just to make sure that everything's going smoothly. And Colleen has the number.
And I did share an editorial that was written by Dr. Cruz and Dr. Cruz is a resident of E-Screen Bush too. And I had mentioned to her that we were going forward with this program for only forty percent of the. Students could participate. And it was a nice editorial that she wrote and it appeared in the Times Union and some other publications and mentioned E-Screen, which is an example of. Some of the inequities and needs for further funding.
That's great. Any questions? Taylor motions, I have not this time. Old business board members, anything? So consent agenda items A through I with an addendum will include that. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? So we'll move all those items by consent. Need a motion to approve that? Mark, need a second. Emily, all those in favor? Approved, including the addendum. New business board members? Public forum, anybody want to adjust the board this time? A lot of folks here. Anybody else? Okay. Board forum, we'll start on my right with Emily.
I'm off that. Thank you.
Jennifer? Mark? John? Cheryl? I just want to say thank you, Allison, for your comments. We do appreciate the staff. I see that there's a lot of teachers here this evening. You know, I don't think this is a matter of lack of appreciation for the profession. I think that we have some work to do, obviously, to come together on some issues. But for me, someone who works with teachers all the time, I appreciate and respect and encourage younger people to get involved with education. It's a wonderful profession. There are concerns about sustainability in the profession, obviously with St. Row's closing. Very, very impactful to the region. I hope that some of our local institutions can pick up the slack. And I know, I hope my college, Sienna, can pick up some of that education programs. We have a few of those folks here today. But it's good to see that you're here. It's good to see that you stayed for the meeting and showed obviously that you're together. We, as a board, appreciate our students, our staff, and our families. We talk about some very challenging issues. We are trying to invest and to think of the future, the long range. Our goals and our vision, I think, reflect that. And we want to be able to come to the future together as a community and as a school. So let's continue to work together, let's can do the things that we do, help our families, help our kids. And I wish everybody a happy holiday and a wonderful break. And I hope we can get a nice, positive start to the new year. Okay. So with that, thank you very much. We don't have a need for executive session unless there's some comments or questions that board members want to discuss, anything? No? So rather short meeting for us lately. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn. John, a second. Jennifer, always a player. Everybody have a great holiday. Thank you very much again, and I appreciate it.